We ask for guidance and brief indication, we ask for guidance so that we may make fair and just decisions for the people of the village of Mont. Do you want to do a call if you want to?
Oh, I'll do a call.
Sure.
Well, Almaranti, yes, an excuse. Westmoreland?
Present.
Noaker?
Here.
Swack, here. Zelma, here.
All right, so approval of the agenda, we have in front of us the agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to add? I will start that off. Item number, number two C. I will move to, we'll make it after three, make it between three and four. I will insert that in there. That way, we can put that to the end. If anybody's watching and doesn't want to go through a long, drawn out process of us chatting or what the master plan would do, it would be for you.
Do you want to make the master plan review, item four, and questions, concerns, item five?
Okay.
Do that one?
Yep.
Okay, let's do that.
And I will make that change on the agenda also.
Fantastic.
So that it's permanent.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept tonight's agenda with a change to move master plan review to item four on the agenda.
Anybody for a second?
I'll take them.
One second. Perfect. Can we get it all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, knowledge of approval of the agenda. We have the four minutes from the previous meeting, that was June 20th, 2024. I believe these were all sent out as well, so just a quick review, make sure there's nothing that needs to be changed. And I will make a motion to accept the planning commission meeting minutes for June 20th, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Going to the agenda, we have audience business is number one. We can make a note that there is no audience today, so there is no audience business and continue. Planning commission business, first item, two A is planning commission officer reassignments. Because I am on the planning commission, because I'm on the village council and I'm actually only a liaison, I cannot sit here permanently, so we have to, if it is the council's direction or choice, I will make a proposal to elect myself as the pro temp president for the following meeting.
Okay, I'll second your motion to have you be pro temp until our next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, all in favor. Let's change this part to here. Sidewalk project or plan update.
Unfortunately, I think that that is not going to happen. I think that we're going into losing those funds. We are just at that point where there's, they have a metric for our spending and the money that we get through Black Range, which isn't a lot. We get $7,000 a year and it's supposed to be used right away as soon as we get it. This is 21, 2021 funds still hanging out there that I had reprogrammed into a sidewalk project, but unfortunately, the person who's supposed to oversee the project and make it happen is on sick leave and I don't see a return date at all for them. And now, as we move into fall, it'll be, odds are, I don't think they'll let me keep that money for another year for a holdover. So they're going to try to absorb it into something where, is it a complete loss? No, they're going to look for a local resident that maybe through the Oakland County Home Improvement Program, perhaps is in need of money to help them and they'll use the money for that. But right now, it's still holding in the account. I just was like crossing my fingers and hoping, but I don't believe it's going to happen.
And that's just, we just kind of wait. And I mean, at this point, I don't know that we could really, we could still do sidewalks right now, but we're kind of getting into where sidewalks are not a good idea because of setting and cracking and such, so that's...
Correct. And the timeline, sometimes ours is extended just because we're not using Davis Bacon money. We're trying to just use local money because the funds are so small, you really can't do, if you use Davis Bacon money, you're not going to, your $7,000 isn't going to go very far.
Because of the cost of contractors.
Right.
Because of the extra cost of...
You got it.
Sort of. So we set everything aside for the following year and hope and pray that something happens.
Right. Yeah, you never know, if they don't gain yet, it's...
It says TBD, right? Or if they allow it to be used for the following year. Truthfully, I mean, at the end of the thing, somebody needs a furnace and I need a sidewalk.
I get it.
I do, so it makes sense.
It's in a different account, so unfortunately, I can't reprogram it again.
Gotcha.
So it's got to kind of stay.
Yep. You can probably only have one shot at that anyhow.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll skip down to item two D, which is issues and items to be added to the annual report. This was a line item added because we will start an annual report, it's something that we are, in our master plan that we would be doing. What goes in the back of this annual report, I'm still kind of not entirely sure about. But I wanted to keep it on here as a reminder of issues that might come up in our meetings, maybe they need to go there. And something like maybe the sidewalk is one of the annual reports that, you know, we had it as this, this is what happened with the funds.
Right.
And it can happen.
It seemed like it was my understanding that it's a summary of what we've accomplished or what we've done over the year.
Yeah.
Because it's something that wouldn't necessarily be in the master plan, somebody could reach out to the village for minutes to find out what we've done, but in lieu of that, if we issue one of these yearly, then it would cover everything that we've done over the year.
Yeah.
So yes, if there's anything that we need to do in that, and then our year ends in February.
So sidewalk update will be part of that.
Good idea.
And that's still kind of a TBD, so it's not something that I would, you know, it's just a, right, a note for right now.
Sure.
Until we know that actually happens with the sidewalks. Next item is two E, which is assignment of planning consultant. We had met, we'd taken, sorry, I said, gone to a seminar about zoning and planning commission and how to do this job. And two of the people who presented were potential candidates to be a planning consultant, which we recently lost because he retired. So we currently have no planning consultant. We were not interested in using the same consultant that Addison Township uses, they have one as well, but we did like the two people and one of them is, the information that we have here, which is Caitlin Haben. She, my impression, she likes small towns. She likes the sort of issues that come with small towns, not large towns. She does manage or assist with consulting other small towns. Just trying to find that same sheet, but I believe it was like Hadley and Elmont.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Emily City, Elmont, Hadley.
Armada. You know, so small, I mean, Emily's, obviously Emily's larger than us, but at the same time, I think her mind is in the same place as ours. And she seems very informative and very, just kind of straightforward. And like I said, she didn't say, oh, I have to add that to your master plan, that has to go through me. She said, you can kind of get that yourself and do it yourself, you don't need me for that, you know?
Right.
And we asked her to quote business on an as needed basis, so it's not a permanent fixture here, but it's somebody that, and she gave us some hourly rates, which I don't know if Mike McDonald made comment on the hourly rates. I don't know what those should look like or what we were paying before, I don't know if they're similar.
Right, right. You know, I think, he said he would let us know if he felt like anything was, you know, out of line, so I think it's pretty...
So it must be normal.
Right.
Okay.
I haven't heard any feedback.
All right, and I haven't either, so...
Either, he just said that he had the packages for us to look at there as far as that goes. I'm, you know, pleased that we have somebody who's willing to just work with us as needed.
Right, and you can tell that they're very as needed anyhow. They've got robot survey equipment by the hour, locating equipment by the hour, vehicle charge by the day, so they're, they're obviously doing it somewhere else, this is not here, which is, which is great, because we, we're trying to do a lot of the master plan in-house so that we're just getting their consulting.
Right.
But obviously, they're there if we need other stuff or bigger stuff, so. Any questions? Is, I don't know how, you guys haven't had this information long enough to really go through it, but is this something that we want to, I think we probably have to recommend to the council.
Correct. I, I believe that's the process too, is that if, if you guys wanted to discuss her or you felt comfortable, you know, with her qualifications and what she's about, that, you know, we would make a motion to have the village council...
Approve, right.
Approve, you know, approve her and have discussion, because we don't get to make any decisions or do any voting when it comes to anything financial, so that would be something that would have to be done through them too. But I tell you what, we interviewed her, Mike and Jennifer and myself, and I was just impressed.
Yeah.
She's really, just very, very sharp.
Yeah.
And I think too, it's, it's nice to have somebody who's aligned with what our values are.
Right. Yep, she didn't come in and try to change things, which I think in other, other areas seem to have gotten that same vibe, like...
Right.
Even, it sounds like maybe Addison Township has dealt with the same, like, well, we need to make you huge in Addison Township.
No, no. I think the issue is because of our sewer problem that we have, there's only so much growth we're going to experience here anyway, so really, somebody who doesn't feel like we feel, what are we going to do with that? Because we're always going to be at odds, we, there's a lot we can't do.
Yeah.
So...
And it's just that this was built 100 years ago, there's literally nothing we can do.
Well, right, and since the, since the sewer initiative failed...
Yeah.
There really, you know, this can tie our hands too, with, with anything. So do you have any thoughts, Doug, at all, on our consultant planner that we...
Sounds like you guys have been over pretty well, which I would...
It was a very impact too.
It was.
He called and said, can you be here in 20 minutes kind of, but...
She was passing.
Yeah, it was pretty much it.
I feel that you guys would probably have looked him over pretty well.
We definitely would have picked him out if they were not aligned, so. She, and she's from Lake Orion, so she's not far from here. The office is out of Flint, or is Flint based, but they deal with, and, and what's nice is she is on maternity leave or will be on maternity leave in October, I believe it was, but already had a ballpark person set up, so that if we needed, if we had questions immediately, there's already somebody that knows.
Also being local, if something come up with...
Yep.
Should be able to handle it for us.
Yeah, we called her the one day because she was going to Elmont. So we stopped her, she stopped here on the way to Elmont and was able to, like I said, just sit and chat with us, because we were in a room of 100 people, so she wouldn't have known us for the next guy in front. But I would, I would highly recommend her specifically and Wade Trim, I think would probably be a fine support, back, back behind that, so.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, we might as well, if everyone's comfortable.
Just to be on the safe side?
Yeah.
To do the motion for them?
Yeah.
To say that I'd like to make a motion that we make a recommendation to select Caitlin Haben as our consultant planner with Wade Trim for planning commission.
Anybody want to second?
I'll second it.
I'll second, we have some, I don't know. Why don't we just do an all in favor just because? Or why don't we just do a roll call?
You want to do a roll call?
Just, just because.
Noaker?
Yes.
Westmoreland?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Zelma?
Yes.
And I only do roll call because eventually there's money and...
Sure, extra work. So, hey, actually, I understand, sorry, we have a special meeting just to solve a problem.
Correct.
Yeah.
Village council meeting update, binary, did not bring.
Oh, here. I have my minutes, if you would just, I quickly like to browse them, I can...
Did you send them to me?
Well, I don't believe I did, actually, I think I, oops.
So we did... The Christmas, the Christmas party, it's technically the tree light ceremony will be December 8th, I believe this is Sunday. Let me just verify that, let's check it. Yep, December 8th. We will have the streets closed between 3:00 and 7:00 o'clock, and that's basically just this section right here from Forest, this section of East Elmwood from Forest down to Mill Division, down to Division, for the ease of use. There will be vendors, there will be, obviously, the tree lighting, Santa is already scheduled and a lot of, well, he's local, right? And we kind of scheduled the whole thing around him, whether or not we can handle that. So we, we steal him as early as possible and she has him secured. Vendors are already secured and I look forward to having a nice big, big event for that one. I don't know that we'll do gingerbread houses again. It ends up being myself and Jennifer Airell making gingerbread houses and one other person who gently wins.
Oh, so I know exactly what you mean. I, I stopped making them just because I won two years in a row and I said, I think it looks bad, so I just stopped making them.
It really did, I just stopped making them. I have the kit number, but I stopped making them, so. That's all I really...
Okay, you know what, for some reason, just my thing isn't wanting to connect with the wifi for some reason, but...
It's like I said, the one thing that it didn't bring is, it's our home of the binary, so I was trying to focus on master stuff.
Yeah, so that's, that's good enough.
But that was, we've got a tree.
If anybody's...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's a tree on Forest that we will be quoting, we won't be taking it down now, but we're going to quote it for later because it came a big cost. The building at 4285, the house that is unkept, we, we have court date scheduled to get the courts to say, yes, that one can be demolished. Because local authorities that we've pulled together, that Mike actually pulled together, have already deemed it a non-stable structure. And it's unfortunate, but it's been allowed to get that far, that is the problem of the homeowner, and the homeowner's not local. And I, I don't know if there would be a person in the village, should be satisfied with that.
No.
It becomes a vacant lot, it's still owned by them. We would have a lead for whatever it cost us to demolish it, but the promise is on that moment, so.
However, so.
It is what it is.
Yeah, oh, and then the other thing was that tree that's holding up the project, the $9,000 quote...
Yeah.
On the cottonwood that's in the right of way on Forest Street over there, that would allow us connectivity, to connect the park all the way going south.
This was sidewalks.
So, you know, we had Row come out and take a look at the right of way, right?
Yep.
To see what we might be able to do, and it just doesn't make sense to go around that tree and closer to Forest Street when the tree already is old and has a lot of issues. But the thing of it is, they're, they're estimating that tree is 90 to 100 feet tall.
So that made it 9,000?
Made $9,000, it's a cheap project for them to cut the tree.
Whatever's on it, right.
Right, so it's going to be, so we just kind of parlayed that, we didn't make any decisions on, on doing it just because it's late in season, we're not going to move forward with sidewalks, and that's just kind of a, that's going to really dig into our project funds a lot. So we just kind of just tabled it till a future date.
It reminds us all talk about the park, you know?
It did not.
Do you have a park update?
Well, we went in there and cleaned up stuff, we did have that one tree down and we got it removed, but also just kind of trimmed up some of the trees there so they could do it and have an easier job keeping it mowed down and cleaned.
Yep.
We removed a couple of the benches that are there, looks like we might be able to fix them and reuse them.
Has it been mowed to your satisfaction?
Oh, yeah, it's been doing a good job. You know, it's just that some of the little branches, you know, trying to get under, I can understand that, so we went and trimmed up a lot so that you can zip through it and get it done quicker.
Yep, yep. That's safe for them too, safe for the machine.
Yep.
So both of those are working.
And probably, when we get into the spring, we'll get back into taking out things, everything that we can.
All before the park, the park project starts, you mean all the flowers and stuff?
Yeah, and, you know, get it prepped and ready for whatever, you know, there's some sort of stuff that we just, we can't do ourselves, but...
It's, that project's going forward, right?
It's slow.
It's slow, but it's funded, so it goes, it moves forward.
Yeah. There's still a lot of issues on what needs to be done exactly and when, and then how much the cost is going to be, try to bring this thing along, you know, you know.
Making most of the money that's there.
Yeah.
Making things reasonable.
Which is, you know, connecting the sidewalks, that's going to be something that we'll be looking into. And I wouldn't suggest moving a sidewalk there until that project is...
Yep, because otherwise it'll get driven over and damaged, right?
Yes.
So actually, that sidewalk then is...
Well, either we're thinking of actually starting where the park ends, moving south, doing that section, waiting for the park to be finished, doing that section to sidewalk, so we would have connectivity, it would be connected when the park was done, that was kind of like the projection for that, so we're just...
And I think we have a sliver landing to determine.
There's a little issue.
Yeah.
That's an issue on, which Mike has volunteered to help with, so.
Right.
All right, that brings us to any...
The master plan.
The master plan review, so. I think at this point, knowing that everything would be updated and new, we'll have to do that, I don't, I'll have to ask Leslie for a copy of that too.
Oh, right, yeah.
I have little notes all over mine, I need to bring them out again, but I think that one of the things that came out of our, just a normal meeting with Caitlin, was that we needed to update our maps, that our maps have to match each other and she noticed that they don't, and I have never looked at them to see. And that would be our, basically our land use overlaying to our current views. It should kind of match and it doesn't totally match.
Page 61 and page 44 is what we're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, because these, pull them up, put them side by side, I think to...
I don't think any, really has a color palette, because that's probably not...
You know, these are the ones that she actually provided when we had the interview with her. We did take a moment and just said, hey, you know, just as an interview question...
Must have got lucky, I gotta...
What do you see in the master plan that you think maybe needs to be changed? And right away, she said, oh, your future land use, or what we call our comprehensive development plan, does not reflect our zoning. And so what we're going to do is we're kind of going to, to solidify that so that they are the same, so there are some small changes that would need to be made.
Because we've got...
You know, actually, I did find here, oh, do you have it too? So this is the original of the, I believe, before, I'm not sure, because this is a colored colored one.
I have a picture. Existing land use.
Just zoning map.
Okay, just, okay, got it.
And I feel like this page, because I noticed that it was loose in the front, so either I told it when we were having the last discussion about master plan, or it's something that was, there were some addendums at the end where we added a map and maybe I might have just set it in there and not known what page to put it on. But, so basically, it's, it's, it's 61, it's just missing color, so it's just these, oh, do you have a color one?
Yeah, I've got a color one too.
Yeah, 61 is colored, but 44 is...
44 is, yeah.
Okay, so...
So it's, it's making the zoning map, it's making the future match at least the current and make sense for...
Correct.
The future.
Correct.
So we have, and, I see, so we've, yeah, and see like we've got a section here that's suburban density, that's not here, this is where your house is, right? Right across from Frederick? Oh, no, you're, you're here.
Yeah, and there, but it looks like, is it gridded the same? You know, I was making my eyes blink.
It is.
I can't, the copy...
That's where we might actually need to see this in color.
Oh, I see it now, yeah, I just got the colored map.
It's section here that needs to be, which is between Porter Lane and Gerst, just east of Forest. On the colored map, the zoning map, we have all green, which would be agricultural, and on this comprehensive, oh, we're allowing houses to be built here, so that would be a future use that would make sense.
We have overhead projector upstairs. I'm thinking for our next meeting, I mean, I can run there really quickly and get it.
Well, and we, it may be colored at this point.
Well, I'm just thinking you could put it up, project it under the wall, so, and then you could point to, because honestly, it's a little bit ambiguous, I don't know, you having, is anybody else having difficulty following?
It is.
Yeah, I mean, a little bit of difficulty following...
Yeah.
Along, so, you know, if you, maybe if you just want to continue, I might run upstairs and just get it really quickly to see if it like...
Does it work with...
Just regular paper? You know, it probably doesn't.
Probably doesn't.
Probably does.
Is it probably, is it old school?
Yes, yes, very old school, so, okay.
For next meeting.
Yeah, it could be easier to over, like, actually overlay the two and have the light some time.
No, that's a really, really good idea, to put them both on clear and then overlay them on top of each other. Yeah, actually, make that something that, let me see if we can't get that done for the next meeting, so we don't have to dig too deep into this, but we could just maybe do an overview?
Because I think a couple of them was the...
I made a note.
The planned development ones too.
This, not in the... Where am I, where am I right now? Is it, oh, because of here. Planned.
So I guess these, and I, and now I'm starting to wonder, like, why would we need, one of the things she also said was you don't have to have all these divisions, you don't have to have all of them. So it would be nice to, even with this one, to kind of commonize some of these if they're not, because I'm looking at like the small farm residential, is that just a section of R1? Do we need to call stuff like that out?
She didn't say that R1 and R2 single family residential on page 61, that they didn't need their own, you could do R1/R2 single family residential to make the map easier to read.
Because now we'd have to look up.
Which makes a lot of sense, instead of having two colors on there, which we do, we have, it's kind of hues and orange, I guess, that we could blend those together, R1/R2 single family residential and just make it one color.
Do you know what R2 is versus R1?
I don't, you could look up really quickly, not off the top of my head, but I think because of our limited land use and what we're doing, it seemed to me that it was a redundancy from what she said. And then...
I mean, if residential covers it, then we would just leave it at that.
Yeah, you know, do you want to, do you want to table this to our next meeting?
I do.
And I'll get the overlays, because I feel like we're all going to struggle with this. Okay, let's just do that. Just making it over for next meeting.
And we could probably vote, next meeting, we can probably make that, let's see, September, October, is everybody here in November? You're still here in November? Do you leave it as that?
Most are maxed and February 1st of March.
Oh, okay, so it's actually been, I think if we do one meeting in November, then we've technically cleared our four for the year and we're good.
Okay.
And I, yeah, I would agree with...
The only thing is, I'm going to say for our schedule, our next meeting would be Thursday, November 21st. Thanksgiving is one week after that, is that an issue for anybody?
Because there's still...
Okay, then we can vote on that at the, at the end of the meeting if you want, and I can just put, get the clear overlays for November's meeting?
Yeah, and maybe we can, if I get it, then Leslie, I think he's in color.
That would be, it's not incredibly, especially if the colors were the same, because then it would be easier to, to see when we overlay them.
And I'll chat with Mike about commonizing some of these, eliminating some of these,
Cleaning it up a little bit?
Cleaning it up a little bit, you know? Just so we can kind of, because we have, I don't know what the difference between village commercial and light commercial is, seems a little retarded thing too.
So the, the light industrial and village commercial?
Oh, that's right, there's industrial, you're right.
Yeah.
All right, so, okay, so commercial and then...
Okay.
There's just a couple that, okay, really don't make sense, all right. So I will, I'll actually sit down with Mike and just, because no decisions would be made for clarity, maybe I can sit down with him and go over some of this stuff too. maybe I can sit down with him and go over some of this stuff too.
Um, yeah, yeah, that's a great idea.
And not do it at the next meeting.
Well, you know, we could do, if Leslie has the software, that all we have to do is just make some little changes and plug some things in. We could bring different quote iterations of what we would like to see. Like, like I talked about, the census data that I can pull, and all the statistical data that I can pull from Oakland County, you know, if we had the time to, you know, plug them in.
I know.
You know, like with the table on page twelve, for example, for age structure, it talks about demographic characteristic, how it's a major impact on future housing. You know, the only thing that's really gonna need to be changed on that is going to be, we refer to the 2000 census on this. So basically, we would just be updating that with the most recent census, and then wherever those changes were, we basically just plug that information in, which is gonna be like, you know, here and here and everything else should remain the same, so little changes like that. We could just make, we could bring it to the meeting, we could look it over.
Yep.
I'm assuming that these tables are gonna change, because these will be pulled from the updated, it's not gonna be referring to the 2000 census. So if we just did page twelve, for example, right, we could go like this and say, new data.
And like I said, just do that offsite, that it's not done.
Right, exactly, because I feel like it's not a really a use of, the best use of our time.
Yeah.
This is just, and all we're doing is an update, so it's not going to be that comprehensive.
So actually, it would be nice to even make these small changes and then get them out, so people can look at them and catch.
Over the next few months.
The next couple of months.
So I'm just gonna put as item two, I can get that census data, and then if you can talk to Leslie about, you know, the program, maybe we can work at plugging it in.
Yep. Oh, okay. This is kind of a funny program, isn't it? Something weird?
I remember saying, I thought I heard you have it, so.
So I got, she, well, just like Linda, she was a graphic designer, so she has some.
Fancy programs.
Something, I don't know, she had D W or something, but.
We don't have to pay her to do it.
I know, right? Couldn't afford it.
I mean, even this has no color for mixed use, and I know we have one parcel of mixed use, right?
We do have one parcel of mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
Four, 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 over there is mixed use, so we would have to update that.
Okay.
Yep, good catch, did you jot that down here?
I didn't, I was already.
Okay, so.
Sticky notes.
Just gonna put four, 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 four is mixed use. And she did say, don't get all crazy with, with doing that, like that, it was mixed use, and then it was changed back to not mixed use. And then we just went ahead and approved them to change it back to mixed use. But moving forward, she said it's not really a good recommendation to change.
To flip that?
Thing where you have mixed use zoning within one individual parcel. So. You know, and she could maybe explain further, you know, the details of her methodology, why she thinks that. Mixed use.
I don't remember that part. But I did, I did go through those sticky notes everywhere, so I can at least start the. And comments in here, so let's start some of those.
Okay, so, yeah, if you. We did get, how far did we get? So.
I should add someone else? I thought we got through a lot of it.
Yeah.
Because after that, I think that's where the, the plans come from, you know, some of the other stuff.
Right, there isn't really. Okay, I did, we did make a note on that, right there.
I guess if we can all take a look at table fourteen or something, page sixty-two, and see if there's anything that we have done. Does that be? Is that something that needs to be updated too? So like village entry signs, high visibility, moderate significance, moderate impact. I guess there's potential funding sources, but some of these things might. Downtown parking, wow. Some of these things might be done, sorry, getting kind of a chuckle here. Wide basis trade, wow, this would be amazing.
So some.
I guess we could at least update some of the comments. You know, if, if need be, so.
Yeah, I agree with you that.
I mean, it says, universal access doors and ramps installed in 2013, oh, okay, already installed in 2013, so that was done.
We could update the park plan, at this point, we didn't have a park plan, so.
Oh, okay.
Village park improvements.
Yep.
That can be changed. As far as village entry signs go, you know, if she's referring to like, welcome to the village of Leonard.
Yeah.
I guess that's one thing, we did add some signs at the Polly and Trailhead and at the Department of Public Works. We now have those updated signs, I don't know if that.
Well, you know, and I guess this is, maybe these are comments for the annual report. Were they done this year or were they done in previous years?
The DPW signs were done two years ago. Where they were just, the project started two years ago, the Eagle Spass project.
And he did just finish those, didn't he?
He did just finish those.
That was this year.
Was it this year?
It feels like it was this year, so then, that would be something for an annual.
Okay, so completed 2024, okay, so, signs.
I mean, I guess any kind of comments that we updated here might actually be, because this is summary, so maybe that's.
Okay, I'm just adding that to the annual report note. Downtown parking, I don't see how we can do that. I mean, I.
I love it, I love it. Okay, sidewalk, we're still working on it. Historic register for the village hall and other structures. As much as I like a historic building to have a historic designation, we would be very limited as to what we were able to do with this building if we got that.
I agree.
We would not be able to use certain doors and now, like, the structure would have to be repaired to its historic significance.
Right.
So that would actually.
We already have some challenges, were there.
Yeah.
Strictly to Roland Hall?
It's, yeah, it's, where do I go?
Well, that's funny, because ten says to nominate Roland Hall, and then number eleven says modernize Roland Hall.
So you can't do both of those?
Right.
Yeah, this would be one or the other.
Okay, I would agree with not doing that with Roland Hall, just because we are having some struggles right now just getting some updates to the building that just need to be done.
And that's probably the best comment that we could add to this.
Yes, it's just, just get rid of whatever you want to consider other structures, but not, not Roland Hall.
Because, like I said, I, I love a downtown, I love historic structures, I love a designation.
Right, no, that's a, that's a good catch.
Being financially strapped, that's not a good one.
Well, just, yeah. If we were looking at using funding to help with the repairs or modernization of Roland Hall, if we were to do that, it would make it.
It would prevent it. Yes, yes. As we find on the mill.
Right.
No, it looks like it's just, everything else is just kind of comments that would be. And we do have a website, so that's all set and done, so that's. Yeah, it's just, I, I think the bulk of the, obviously, the work had been done, that was the painstaking. Now it's just kind of updating little things and spots that, right, just kind of making. And a lot of the, just from working in automotive, a lot of it is do what you say, say what you do. It's just making sure we match with certain things, like an annual report and like. I can't remember what else it was that I, I know I have sticky notes on all of those things, so.
And is there a page for the park that we discussed that last meeting about updating? Because now that Doug is here, he, being that he's on the park committee, could probably more aptly help us, page twenty-nine? With the Leonard nature park?
Oh.
Because he could probably be the best person for input on that.
Yep.
Yeah, there's, I can see a couple of things.
Isn't it a page you'd want to work on? Possibly bring back your ideas to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Or just mark it up and then we'll, somehow we'll have to highlight all the changes that are made so we could see them?
We could add, there's no reason to not add the park's plan, because Row did it, so why not?
I think sidewalk name was another one that should be added.
We definitely need that.
To the end, and these are kind of secondaries at the back, so. They don't replace, they just add more value. But yeah, if there's something that you see on there, go ahead, mark it up, and then.
Yeah, I would say.
I could snap a photo of it even, and just add it to. I had trail signs, corral on the Polly and Trail for number thirty.
Oh, that's right, the corral.
I had, I've got a big X on the water machine, the water spigot.
Oh, right.
So yeah, it's, is the mill historic? Is that one designated historic or no?
Um, it is not on the historic register, I do not, the legal page are you on?
Thirty-one. I had a comment, that's why I asked him.
I feel like.
It doesn't have a plaque, so I'm guessing it doesn't.
No. Yeah, you know, we could, there is more information about what's been done. We have several different phases of work that has been done at the mill, to get us to, I realize it still looks pretty sad, and it actually, this picture, yeah, does need to be updated. But there's a couple of different grants, a couple of different projects that happen, and there's probably, I think, seven different things that have happened, that we could include, and most of it actually comes from the mill's website. The Save Our Mill, Leonard Save Our Mill has it on there, so we could add that to it. If anybody ever just wanted to know, I mean, I, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have, just because, you know, eventually, if anybody ever really got the motivation to sit down and wanted to start looking into grants, writing grants, and staying on top of it, there's a lot of organizations that just love mills and really just want to make them the centerpiece of a town, and really upgrade them. And, you know, this would be a wonderful mixed use thing that we could have, would be, we get the mill going. But unfortunately, it takes a lot of time and effort to write the things, but at least people could see what we've done. So I'm just gonna put past updates from website.
So there's also, there is a. I'm trying, I, I think it's a National Association of Realtors grant that is eight, and it's been like two years since I worked with this. Either eighteen hundred dollars or five thousand, maybe it was three thousand or five thousand. When I approached, when I asked them a couple of years back about projects that we had at the time, they loved the mill. They loved that we would, the grant wants to pull together the neighborhood, the grant wants to say, we're gonna put this together so that people come here, and people gather, and people use it. And I think one of the things we were talking about was, like, officially making kind of a stage at the mill, so something that's not really attached to the mill, so that it doesn't stop what the mill's doing, but at the same time allows us to use the space around it, because we had one concert last year. And we had a big humongous crowd of people, and it was fun. And then I had other people that wanted to be in the concert, and we talked about having movies at the mill with a big projector screen that just hung on the side of it. And the grant would fund things that would promote that.
Ah, I see.
And this was, it's an annual, it's an annual thing, there are other projects, and there were people that would help me write the grant.
Okay.
So I did have access to something, you know, it's something, like, and this is kind of an open.
Yeah.
If we can think of anything.
Well, if you could think, if you can mind meld somebody that could give us the next infusion of cash that we need, which would be, I think, over ten thousand dollars, something, and I don't recall, because it's been a long time since I, I got involved in this, but there's something structural that has to happen inside that's really, really important before any more steps can happen. And so the bigger issue we're having with it is, you know, there's a lot of things that can happen, but that has to happen first, it was less noticeable.
Is it floor joists?
It is floor joists, I think, that's what it is, it's a, it's a structural issue that has to be taken care of, and, you know, like I said, it's costly.
Yes.
But if that could be done, so many other little things could be done in little phases, where maybe you only need an infusion of, you know, three grand here, or another organization could give you, you know, five grand, but this is the, this is the one that's the problem, is kind of holding up the whole process. So, and you know, and a lot of times, like, when people are looking for, when we're applying for grants, they want matching funds. They want us to have some skin in the game, well, I, I don't know that we can do that. So, you know, we gotta find some generous fund factor that would like to put floor joists in our, our mill, and get the ball rolling, because then I feel like, little by little, people could take it and really get something going with it.
We did have a little bit of that when we reinforced the foundation of it.
Yeah, that was expensive.
Returned it to the stone foundation, which is a great one.
Yes.
So that's, I know that's.
So there's some updates to the park that we can put in here too.
Right, I mean, it'd be nice to let people know what our next phase is that we're looking for, for it.
Yeah, actually, a lot of that information would probably be good for this, because, again, it's looking toward the future too.
Okay, yep, you're right, thirty-three, we got rid of the church, correct, the church is now.
Now, did we do that on the zoning? Does zoning have that as?
Good question.
Yeah, that's gotta be changed.
That's gotta be changed.
Okay, so.
Looks like it is potentially already single use unless it's part of the red, it must be part of the red, right?
No, that's commercial, I don't think.
How far down, the church is farther down, right? Oh, I flipped on the wrong side, the church is.
Some south side.
On the south side, but is it? Where the heck is the church?
You know what, it's right next to that little patch.
Of yellow, that is in the middle?
Yeah.
It's the one to the, to the west of it, right, the little, looks like a parallel.
Where the, where the notch is?
Yes.
This is the notch?
Yep.
Because there is a access, this is one of the few access areas to access this really large parcel, right?
Yes, okay, so it must be, this must be the church right here, is that little parallelogram?
Right, right next to it.
Yeah, which we're, okay, so I need to know, I'll have to figure out what R2 is.
Yeah.
And then I guess on the other side, so the other church is also noted as an R2 as well, because this is it right here, this church. I assume they would have a different designation based on being churches and not being, being a different taxpayer thing?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I don't know the history, because, so the parcel, the whole parcel was owned by the archdiocese, right? And then they sold the church off, but the archdiocese still had this parcel here.
Mm-hmm, correct, to my knowledge, okay. And that is probably one of those spots where our current zoning and our future zoning, I would be surprised if we wanted that entire parcel to be R1.
I agree, I think that it doesn't, first of all, it doesn't reflect, this is not the same as that.
Correct, and that's probably what she was really talking about, is we've got some agricultural in what we're considering. We, it's like, it's like we'd like to knock down houses and put farmland in.
Well, the problem is with it anyway, is that you couldn't do it if it only had one access point. And from here, the way this zoning is, where all of a sudden it's been broken up from that zoning, you can't have one way in and one way out and develop that property. You have to have two, which means that this would have to stretch farther over there. So I'm not sure what's going on, because there is somewhere over here, I think, that you can enter this parcel.
You're gonna also need the resource constraints to be down there, because there's wetlands.
Is that why this was drawn the way it was?
That's probably why this one's drawn the way.
Okay, so, but isn't it true, Doug, that with this, that you can't develop this as it is, like, right here, because right now, they're only showing one way. Because right now, they're only showing one way in and one way out, which is that overgrown parcel that's right next to the Methodist church. That's the entrance and that's the exit and what it looks like it's saying is, yep, we'll go ahead and develop this. But you can't, you've gotta have another way.
Not necessarily, cause you look at Rosie Drive.
There's one way in and one way out.
Oh, okay.
So it could be.
Okay, you know, for some reason, I thought there was something in the zoning with that, but maybe not.
There'll be more problems with wetlands.
Mm-hmm, well, yeah, you can't do anything to, to change them, so they are what they are. Where's, where are you getting that map from?
Uh, forty-one. Page forty-one.
Oh.
So you're gonna need that as an overlay that'll.
That's another one that would have.
Another one, color would help.
Right.
It would definitely help.
Okay, so we'll try to get some color.
We'll get color on.
For everybody to just have and at minimum replace and say, we have traffic circles out here?
You know, two, the other thing is, uh, we have, um, when I use the, um. Oh gosh, I just did it the other day, um, when I use our Sams.gov thing, I can like zoom in on parcels and get all kinds of like little. Um, bits of information about flood plains and elevations and all kinds of other stuff that I have to use for when I'm doing grants for stuff.
Okay.
So, um, I could get those, um, you know, color pages, if you guys, you know, wanted to have like, um. A satellite view of some of this, that might be nice.
Yeah, do you get that county?
I think they call it, it's a, it's called a format, I get it through, um.
Oh, it's, okay.
Uh, is, is it the EPA one or is it the, um?
It's FEMA.
It's FEMA, it's FEMA.gov.
Cause I pulled those up for parcels, sell them.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about, it's a, it's a format, it's a smaller version of the bigger thing.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, just search FEMA flood map and you'll, you'll get it, then you pick that map.
Right.
Yep, I pull them up for all house sales too.
Yeah, that'd probably be best for updating this.
It would be probably helpful, yeah, and then it, it's just, um, cause this is really grainy and difficult.
So in this and maybe. This light blue down here, which is multiple family, um, the zoning map.
What page are you on?
Sixty-one, oh, yeah, okay, there's a light blue, is that that, is that the parcel that looks like it just sold? It has, all I see from the road is a driveway, but I thought, I thought it was a fifty acre parcel or something like that, it was a big parcel. All I see is a driveway.
Yeah, someone's been using it too.
Right, and the sign's down, so I assumed it was sold.
At least I saw the sign. The one just south of the fire station?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Like that's.
And then, do we have to have multiple family anywhere, is that a requirement? Not that I don't want it, I just wanna make sure it's in the right spot, that makes sense.
I'm still thinking about that blue parcel that you talked about, because, um, one person did buy it last year.
Okay, that makes sense.
He's, he's been hunting on it.
Okay.
Uh, he's not developed it, although I think there might be a structure of some sort on the property, I'm not sure what it is, hunting blind maybe. But for a little while.
Cause it looks.
He was having difficulty accessing the property, which I think he made a bridge to get over, um, some obstacle that was there. But for a little while, he had asked Jerry if he could access his property from, from the fire department's parking lot. And he let him do it just a little bit for a little while, but then he didn't want to have liability and so he said, you need to square that away.
Yeah.
So whatever he did, he squared that away and I don't know.
And I guess, I guess now that I'm looking at it too, if our, if we're quoted coded correctly here and this looks like it's wetlands. Then I definitely don't want multi-family sitting on wetlands.
Mm-mm.
So it's the, it, it's these kind of little disconnects that I think that's what she's.
Right, no, and that's really, that's another good catch, Jennifer.
But it's almost like we'd, we'd always have to go like section by section and just.
Well, you know, once again, it, I don't know that I could get it to scale, but, um, you know.
Maybe section.
We could, we could have it put on the, I could get another one done, like I can get a format done and I could put it on a clear, um, thing. And then we could try to at least look at it, you know, if you wanted to and I, and it would probably be in color, so we could do a clear.
Where do I have that?
Do this one, um, so we could have a page forty-one. Or see if Oakland County can give us, um, something, cause I felt like some of these pages, I wonder if they came from them or if Leslie just delied to these.
They may have, just come from them, but they're, they are difficult to do in black and white.
It's really hard, I'm having a hard time and how are we going to make good decisions for the community, well, we can't really decipher what we're looking at.
Right.
And it would be nice to be able to see actually where the structures are in, um.
Oh, views and vistas, that's what.
You know, because honestly, I'm looking at a blank thing, but I know that there's structures here.
It's all confusing, gotcha.
And make clear.
Yeah, we've got it, so this is consistent here, but then like, so then it's sitting on wet, it could be sitting on wetlands here, so I don't wanna put multi-family on wetlands.
Yeah.
Um, it would have to be across the street or something like that, that would be.
Maybe something with buildings.
You're right, this is, I could see where this is difficult to do in the first place, let alone.
Right.
Modify without, uh.
Yeah, let's get those pages.
Yeah, let's get the pages and let's.
Understand it and make sure it's correct.
It's good if we can just plow through the rest of the maps and if anybody sees anything.
Yeah.
Let you know, I'll get them made, that way I'll just have extras if anybody thinks, oh, you know, I would like to have that as a point of reference. So if you wanna just take a look at all the zoning maps right now, I'm going to do page forty-one, um.
Forty-four?
Page forty-four, cause actually, and we're gonna do page sixty-one.
Yeah, and ultimately, it's making sixty-one lead into forty-four, so that that makes sense.
In color.
And you want twenty-eight too?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I wanna know, everybody's opinion, just throw one out here, cause I'm doing one, I can do five.
Got it.
What page should you say that was, twenty-two?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
We have community facilities and open space.
It just may be easier.
It's just, it's always easier in color, cause, yeah, cause again, we've got these little circles, we have, and they may, being that there are circles, hashtags and lines.
And then if you decide you, you know, when we make the changes, then they can just be adopted into the new.
Yeah.
Master plan.
Yep.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so what would your recommendation be for twenty-eight, just to have it done or did you, um?
I guess it'd be nice to see what the original looks like, um, being that there, it, it is only three. Um, they're fairly easy to.
Yeah, but we have, uh, low relay that and, and, uh, to see how they.
Make sure the zoning is right.
Yeah, how everything fits together.
Yep.
Page twenty-eight, okay.
I, I gotta making sure that those just match.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to work on the scale a little bit on those.
Eighteen, twenty, I don't think that needs to be done on the map, that's just roads.
And forty-one was the, oh, that was that format.
Mm-huh.
Nobody wants roads, choose a piece.
Fifty-one. On page four, too.
Page four.
Is there?
Yeah.
You know.
I've got some maps.
Forty.
Oh, there is, that's the extra one, yeah, cause that was the, uh, no color for mixed use.
Took this one.
This is the one that started this whole thing, yeah?
It might have been because that church is public institutional on page four. Whereas on page sixty-one, it was single family residential.
Right, yeah, it's totally called out.
Okay, we're talking about the church?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. On page four is what? Both of the churches are showing on, on page four as public slash institutional.
Yep.
Okay. And then where is it somewhere else as a conflict?
On page sixty-one, they were single family residential, but they were that R two-one.
Yep.
In years, okay?
So, um, perhaps if I do these little things, could you come with all of the definitions and breakdowns of each one? What, what encompasses, um, R one, what encompasses R two in our zoning? I mean, it might just be in, in here, um, you know, just, I sometimes, you know, in the middle of meeting, it takes me time to go through and dig it out.
Yeah.
But, um, if we had what the definitions are.
Yep.
For our zoning, then at least, because we're gonna have to follow that.
Yep.
Per reference and that might be helpful as we're making decisions going through those.
Cause now I'm looking, this is the, uh, public institutional here is existing land use, zoned as residential or zoned as agricultural. And public use.
Oh, I see, oh, you know, I, wow, okay, yep.
That should be a public. I see, but we don't really have it over here, but it would have to be a village commercial, is it village commercial at that point or is it the fire department?
Commercial, it's a commercial property.
It is commercial, so it should be red.
What are other choices, I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
It is, okay.
I can, I can even look them up, or I guess we can look them up by parcel and see what they.
Right.
Are technically online as. Yeah, it would be nice to kinda combine some of these R, cause it, it doesn't, some of these, they don't really matter, you know, R one, I, I don't know that they matter, I guess I should. Look and see, does it matter if it's R one versus R two?
Here, it may not, just, just because, you know.
Yes, and you're right, this is school, here, that's R two, okay. Okay, so there's a little bit of getting, gathering some information together before, um, trying to make changes here.
Yeah, I'm. Okay, so actually, yes, we've got.
All the stuff.
Yeah, you don't even have to bring them, Jennifer, if we just open our book and refer to ten point one.
Okay.
Um. It, it kinda goes through just permitted uses, I don't know about that. Uh. I'm gonna do multiple family, oh, I don't want that one. Anyway, I'm not gonna waste time, we'll do this another time, I can forget it.
Yeah.
I think just, um, yeah, it's just making a good plan to be organized for next meeting, um, yeah, if you can get the definitions, I'll get the overlays.
And then, like in this case, I understand where they wanna say, where we would wanna say, um, I'm, I'm looking at. Between Porter and Gerst again, on the east side of Rochester Road or, or Forest. On the comprehensive, the future plan, we have a little bit of like suburban density, so. Um, you know, larger sized parcels, I'm assuming those are the two acre parcels. Who makes the choice on how far that goes, like, should that, like. Do we just say the whole thing can be, do we need the village to, you know, do we need the village to say, yes, this makes sense, cause. I wouldn't wanna just say, hey, let's be, do, let's throw the multi-family up there, it does make sense.
I think, you know, like moving forward, looking, you know, because our, our job basically is to, you know, look into the future and make. Good decisions for this village of what people are gonna want ten, twenty, fifty, a hundred years from now. And I, I think that originally, when the Rosie Drive plan was brought, I wasn't here, I don't even think I'd lived here at that point. Um, you know, uh, they probably brought it to the planning commission and I think that they came up with it, they wanted, what, two acre parcels for the?
Well, they, this was the, this was the planned unit one, so this one was a little bit different in that some of them are two acres and some of them maybe a little bit.
Okay, so, um, from, from, I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were having that brief conversation. Um, with the consultant planner, she was saying that that's kind of our purview as a village to, to say. So if somebody comes in, especially because the way parcels are divided now, they used to be platted, no one plats anymore. Everyone just site condos and then you have like, you know, common areas for use. You know, we can set the tone for what we want, like let's say someday Farmer John doesn't wanna farm anymore. And he wants to sell that to a developer who would like to put a subdivision like Rosie Drive in there. We can kind of dictate what we're wanting for that, okay, that's residential, that's agriculture, it could be residential, that's not a problem. But what do we want as, as planners for those parcels, do we want two acre parcels? Or what are we looking for, do we want, you know, a green belt, you know, in between, you know, that neighborhood and perhaps, um. You know, Porter Lane, what are things that, that we want for that?
Pages six, seven, eight and nine.
Oh, no. Let's find more. Oh, might as well just go with five, six, seven, eight, oh, oh, I got you, to answer that question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Well, I guess I see, uh, to go with five, six, seven, eight, nine, um, making sure that some of these larger parcels that are still big like that. Are considered to, so that we don't break rules like we've noticed in some of the Rosie Drive parcels.
Right, and I think too, just moving forward, you know, that we, if they come to us with a plan and we don't care for it. Um, we can say no, that we have a different vision, just because that's what they wanna do doesn't mean that's what, what we have to do. If they wanna develop it, then we can say no, everybody needs to have, you know, an acre and a half or two acres or, or whatever. And that, um, they don't have to, they don't dictate.
Um, it's also gonna sound kinda funny, but I would like to, especially on some of our outer borders here. Kinda match what Addison's doing, or, you know, at least the two of them should be kinda close so that. If you're on the south side of Gerst, the rules are pretty much the same as the north side of Gerst, that we're not, cause right now, um. It, as part of the election, I had ended up talking to somebody who's been on the planning commission for Addison. He said that was one of the biggest complaints is that neighbor A is like, why does he get to do this? Because you're on the south side and, you know, he's on the north side and the rules were different between the two, so it'd be nice to. So, again, it could be going forward, but kinda matching what Addison has on that other side of the road. So that we're not doing something that's grossly different than the other side, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And, and like I said, we don't have to, in all cases, we still have our own choices, but it would just be nice to try to make a match a little bit, you know, just to.
Meld the community.
Yeah, just to flow nice, you know, and, and like I said, we wouldn't wanna put, you wouldn't want farmland on one side and. Condos, you know, multi-unit condos on the other side.
Yeah.
It can happen, but it doesn't, you know, it would look funny, so, not that that's gonna happen, but, you know, it, looking forward, we don't know. Okay, so there's a lot of maps to pull up, there's a lot of, holy smokes.
Yeah, I would definitely.
I see guys getting a little sun.
So, do you think that this definition came from the zoning book that they have there? Um, on page six, a num, a number of larger parcels in the residentially. And agriculturally zoned areas had the potential in response to economic conditions to be subject to lot splits and subdivisions. Given the need for each lot to have road access, is it appropriate to limit the lot width to depth ratio to prevent the creation? Of a number of very long narrow lots? Where did that, where did that come from?
That's definitely from the zoning then, um.
Was it?
Cause you don't want.
Sure, you get like shotgun.
I have a couple of them, yeah.
Yeah, shotgun lots.
Like these two right here.
Mm-hmm, and you have to have road access.
Tiny in there.
Okay.
They have road access, but they're narrow.
Okay, so that's something definitely to be considered when we look at future use.
Yeah.
You know, um, of, of property.
Is this parcelled out like that too, right now?
Um, I don't know why that's like that, no, no, I know that it's not, because when he comes in and pays his taxes, he has three parcels.
Oh, okay.
So one of them is his sister's, um.
Okay.
That goes back there, I don't know what the third one is, to be honest with you. And I, so it could be that the, the field is broken into two pieces, but I know that hers is kind of like. Chute, chute, like that, but what is all this business, I have no idea.
Yeah, okay.
It's a good question.
Might be a non-issue.
What, why is it like that, I am.
Alright, so we've got.
The other one's the house, one's the land, one's the house, one's Rita's. But what are, what are these other little segments in here and why are they like this?
You know what, I do see a parcel, oh, that's the neighbor, this is the neighbor, there's a house on that, that's the next neighbor. Okay, it is parcelled out like that.
Oh, so this is the house, this is.
His house is on the, uh, little square in the middle there.
Right.
So that's his three.
That's the house, this is Rita's, he has. That's the house, this is Rita's, he has land going to here, um. Maybe, I, I don't know what that is, and then, so I don't know.
Those are neighbors.
Those are the neighbors?
Those are neighbors, okay, so it really is parcel out like that, okay.
Alright.
But I would like to take that into consideration, because I would leave green, green, and green, because those guys. Are houses on them, they're not part of Specia's land.
Right, that's a house.
It would just be.
That's a house.
The little square and the.
That's a house, you know what, so why I'm at it, why don't I take this map? And I'll just do a satellite view of what's there, just with structures, just to take a look at.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to make sure we don't zone something incorrectly for something that's already there. There's actually a little sliver land right next to your parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That belongs to Doug, the neighbor that lives directly behind me.
One fifty border.
You know, oh.
I do.
Okay, yeah.
Funny when they said there was a pieces.
No, it's, it's silly, it's absolutely silly, but yes, he has that little sliver.
Okay.
Okay, so that was satellite view of structures.
Okay, so we'll just get some colored maps. And then we'll just kind of. Make some changes, um, obviously marking that up as a change, revised version, so that people know the difference between what was officially in the book. And what was revised outside of the book.
That is, uh, yeah. When we were working on the Mr., the master plan, we had iterations.
Oh, sure.
So, you know, maybe one time we just came and updated census data, and that was an iteration, everybody had to go through it, and then, you know, as we update the maps. Um, and clearly, that seems like that's the biggest.
And I think the only thing that would require multiple people to work on it would be the future. Uh, that would be the, everything else is not questionable, it's existing.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just making the match, you know, but the future one is the only one that, uh, I would want.
Mm-hmm.
Multiple people to work.
I agree, cause in something that's definitely easier to read than this.
Yeah.
Cause that's something, that is for sure.
Salts get paid so much.
Yeah, so.
Holy smokes, guys.
So, oh, I guess I need to, that's, I'm, I'm, I'll ask Leslie if she has a color copy of page forty-four.
I was just gonna ask the whole thing.
Okay.
They're probably in there then.
Okay, so forty-four in particular is gonna be like our really, really important one that, um.
Yeah, the future.
We need a color copy of, if she's, if she has one. Cause it would be still challenging for me to make an overlay page of this.
Yeah.
So if you, if you talk to Leslie about that, and she has it, if you could share it with me.
Yeah.
Then I'll be able to do something with it.
Yep.
Um, development plan. Alright, awesome. Alright.
And who did actually choose all these designations, was that just?
This is coming down a long ways.
Yeah, okay.
I heard it too.
Forty-four, I don't think it was, last updated twenty seventeen.
Makes sense. And not much has changed, um.
Oh, she did get these from Oakland County. Oh, it's right there, she got them from Oakland County, so.
Well, that's even harder.
So.
Cause now Oakland County has to update them?
I, I, um.
I hope not.
You know, we, we can make a list of questions, once we hire the consultant planner, or else we can just call Oakland County and.
You know, maybe she just has that on her to show the, the parcel area.
Maybe, maybe she did, maybe she didn't get them from Oakland County, it's difficult to say.
Okay.
Wish I had brought my tablet, because I, I could have looked at it and given you an answer.
Well, it doesn't feel like we got very far, I'm sure, but at the same time, every. Every, um, piece of information that we learn or go over is going to be.
Right, I, I think if nothing else, it's nice to get our feet, but get familiar like with the maps a little bit, just so next time we deal with these. We'll be a little bit more familiar, so I just feel like, um, certainly couldn't hurt.
And I'll see if I can find a map that surrounds us, to see that we're kind of in, just like I said, I just wanna be in line and kinda matching a little.
Yeah.
Or at least complimenting.
Yeah, complimenting.
For sure.
Alright.
Do we feel like that's enough, does anybody wanna go through that?
I feel like it's, it's enough for today, just because I feel like I'm working blind without good maps.
Yes, um, if it is the pleasure of the council, then I will recommend that we adjourn.
I'll second.
It is eight eighteen.